Testing, hello.
Good. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pompton Lakes Planning Board to order. Formal advance notice as required by NJSA 10:4-1 and SEC has been provided to this meeting of the 48 hours in advance of today, given the time, date, and location, and to the extent known at the time, the agenda of this meeting. Such notice stated that formal action may or may not be taken. This meeting will be video recorded and will be broadcast later for interviewing for the public. The notice was, one, posted on the bulletin board outside of the offices of the municipal clerk, reserved for this and other similar announcements; two, provided to the suburban trims, the newspaper designated by the council, and the planning board to receive such notices; and, three, filed with the borough clerk. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance is certified by the United States of America and due to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom Lee, local, please.
Yes.
Mr. Simone.
I am here.
Mr. Truss.
Here.
Mr. Fred Carroll.
Here.
Ms. Michael.
Here.
Mr. Adder.
Here.
Dr. Pendexter.
Here.
Mr. Keating.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Accular is excused. Uh, Mr. Baldwin.
Here.
And, uh, Captain Mike Bennett.
Here.
Thank you all for your attendance tonight. For correspondence, we have two items. One is borough local introduction of ordinances, 23 Code 905, 23 Code 906, in public hearing, and ordinance number 23-10, amending the zoning map of the township of Corinck, that are available for review at the planning office if anyone is interested. Okay, applications. Pete, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, minutes, yeah, regular minutes of May 16, 2023. You'll have a chance to review it, and if so, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept.
Second motion, Trimprose, Richard Carroll. Any corrections, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, then we will have a vote, please, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions?
Present.
Present, okay, thank you. All right, tonight, the first application is a continuation from last month's meeting, PB 23-01, Stephen T. DePaul, Grant Avenue, Pompton Lakes, New Jersey, Block 3203, Lot 30, Zone R-4. The meeting was terminated last month with information that had to be re-submitted, so I will now turn it over to the attorney to discuss the application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Altman, the law firm of Jeffreya Hopkin, involved on here on behalf of the applicant, Stephen DePaul, and I pledge that what occurred at last meeting is not going to occur tonight. So we have some, some new witnesses, and we have a revised set of plans. So, just to rehash some of what I mentioned to the board last time, we're here on a subdivision application. It's a continuation of the meeting of May 16, as the chairman said, and our revised plans, really corrected plans, were submitted, I believe, on June 6. So, the first witness I would like to call is Rob Benedetto. He's our engineer, and he is prepared to testify concerning these corrected plans.
Do you testify?
I do not.
You do not.
Do you state your name, spell your last?
Robert Benedetto, B-E-N-E-D-P-T-T-F.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I did.
I was just gonna ask if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Mr. Benedetto, would you provide the board with your work experience and education?
Graduate of the University of Delaware, bachelor's in environmental engineering, applied as an civil engineer for 10 years, licensed in New Jersey, New York, Tennessee, Massachusetts, Maine, Maryland, and presented in front of dozens of boards across the state.
Acceptable, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Mr. Benedetto, are you familiar with this application?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the plan? How are you familiar with this?
Uh, I'm a signature.
Would you like to go through then and explain what it is that this floor is trying to accomplish here?
Sure, so, you know, if you guys want to cut me off, because I know you're all familiar, but please do. Block 3203, Lot 30, right now, it's, I'm just gonna scroll through a little bit, it's currently a parallelogram-shaped lot covering, oh, too far, covering 28,518 square feet. It's been developed for many years as a single-family home with a couple of accessory structures. The project is to subdivide the lot into three separate lots, all equal size, also parallelogram-shaped lots. The variances we'll be requesting are for a minimal lot area, minimal lot, planner will be speaking on behalf of the variances later. Go to the site plan. Now, here's the subdivision plan. Now, I understand there was errors on the plans in our last mission related to the variance, lot width and lot area. Those have since been corrected, so I can zoom in here a little bit for everyone. So, the lot area, there was a discrepancy with the lot area. It was incorrectly shown on the tax map as about 32,000 square feet.
Let me just stop you for a moment, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to be clear in preparing for tonight's hearing, I noted that in our application, we listed 32,000 square feet on the application. That is incorrect. The correct square footage is what is on the chart, that's on the screen now.
28 by 18.
Correct. Mr. Benedetto, would you speak perhaps initially to how it is that the square footage was calculated?
So, and this is just, you know, a guess based on the tax map that wants to load again, but the, if you multiply the angles, the side lot line versus the front lot line, it comes out to the 32,000 square feet. It's not a perfect rectangle, so that doesn't calculate. So, it's 28,515 that we show currently, 518, I'm sorry, is the correct lot area. Divide that in three, and that's how we have our new proposed lots. Similar with the frontage, divided by three, in order to make the numbers exact, the one lot is .01 feet larger than the other that's over here. As far as the site plan itself, you'll see the house, the houses are actually, the footprint of the houses are taken from the architectural plan, architectural plans are now shown. Each house has a 20-foot wide driveway, you know, your typical access to Grant Avenue as well. Each house complies with all setback requirements. It's gonna be a concrete sidewalk to the, to a stairs and then a covered front house, uh, front area. And then, as you can see with everything kind of being aligned, angled in a angled way, all the houses are aligned like so, kind of similar to the lots over on the left to the west of the property. From a drainage standpoint, we maintain existing drainage patterns. You know, we were adding a little bit of a high point in the middle of the site. The roof leaders are all gonna run to individual retention systems, basically a small drywall in the back of each house, and the drywells were designed to cover the two-year storm over the increased area and impervious coverage, as per coordination with the town engineer. Then your utilities are pretty standard, you know, water and sewer's gonna be 10 feet away, we'll have a cleanout for the sanitary sewer right at the property line. Electrical is probably for the westernmost line, it's gonna come off of a utility pole over here, and then on the two eastern lots, we're gonna have them come over for a utility pole here. That's actually why we had to flip this one house, was so that we didn't have to move the utility pole. I don't think anybody wants to deal with that. And I think I mentioned before, the 20-foot wide driveways, each house is gonna have its own access to Grant Avenue, and that covers really most of the project. Do you guys have any questions?
Well, first thing I'm gonna do is go to our engineer, Greg. Do you have, did you have a chance to review everything that's gone on and what, tonight? And do you have comments, please?
Yes, I, I went through the previous history in which you outlined. I don't take exception to the, the current plan with the exception that the one might have been covered on the first meeting, so please tell me if it has, in which we asked for testimony as to why this would not be five for kids in two lots as opposed to three, is there, is there a sufficient answer to that, to the board's question, or we would like to hear about that? Is that what was covered on the first meeting?
If you need to, big question, please, go ahead.
Well, it was a question we were gonna ask tonight, so why don't we go ahead right now with your question?
You can, you can address it, although I think that the planner is probably more appropriately prepared to respond to the question, although I will say this, that the municipal land use law does not really require the best application, it requires that we satisfy the positive and negative criteria, and so the planner will speak to that, but if you want to address the question...
We have the planner here tonight?
We do.
Okay. We can defer to that, then.
That is acceptable, okay. Just one or two other, just my questions, if there are any questions to be concerned about here or flood hazard areas?
Um, no, no environmental concerns.
Okay, very good. If the board, and this is just something I've seen many times in my travels with subdivisions, with an existing building on it, such as the house as it stands in present day, if the board is inclined to approve this, I would recommend that there's some timing involved in the demolition of the house as it rides with the subdivision, because if the house stays and you break the subdivision, then you'll have an existing house all of a sudden not performant across three lots. So, that's just something to be concerned about when you have an existing structure on a property in which you are planning to subdivide.
No objection.
It's just a consideration for the timing from the demo to the actual building.
Well, maybe we could discuss that further with the owner, the property, just to get his general intentions?
I'm happy to, I'm happy, he's here tonight, I'm happy to call him.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have no further questions for colleagues at this time.
Okay, any members of the board have questions for the engineer as far as what happened last month, what you see this month? Looks like the numbers work, as far as, you know, matching up with the, with the intent. They discussed the drainage. There's some issues that we would talk about regardless, we have more witnesses tonight.
We do.
But any, any questions from the board members? Okay. I'm gonna open up to the public for questions strictly from what the engineer testified to. So, if there's anyone from the board, if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, strictly to what you heard tonight on the engineer, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public portion regarding the engineer. There'll be another opportunity for the other professionals, as well as another opportunity at the end of whatever we get to discussions. Okay, we're good, Mr. Altman, for now.
I'd like to call Steve, Stephen Lyden, who's our planner.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last.
Sure, my name is Steve Lyden, L-Y-D-O-N.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Steve?
Thank you. Mr. Lyden, would you please provide the board with the benefit of your educational background and work experience?
Sure, I'm a Rutgers University graduate, won't hold on against me coming football season. I graduated there many years ago, I've been licensed as a professional planner in New Jersey since the late 1980s. That license is still valid. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is sort of the national licensing for planners. I used to be a municipal planner in Morris County community, was also the zoning officer, which if anyone takes a community zoning officer, my recommendations don't, it's a great rating of enemies. I've testified in Superior Court, Municipal Court, I have worked with a few municipalities through the years, and most evenings I'm out presenting testimony to boards like yourselves or zoning boards, and that's it.
Okay, acceptable, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, Mr. Lyden, are you familiar with this application?
Yes, I looked at all the materials I've submitted to the board, I've also been out to the site twice, been out and walked the site. I drove around Lincoln to see where it comes up against the almost connecting to grant. Grant Avenue is basically flat and straight, it's typical municipal width, it looks like, it's got curves, it's got sidewalks, usually more shade trees, and it's mostly developed.
And, and you understand that we're seeking two variances tonight?
Yeah, well, yes, to classifications that I can discuss. And those both could be granted in my estimation under the C2 provision of the statute.
And, and why is that?
All right, well, before I get into that, let me just fill a little bit of a background for you. You've already heard that block lot, you've heard 228 Grant Avenue, it's on the south side of Grant Avenue between Colfax and the railroad, and it makes for a nice little confined area of investigation, if you will. The property has about 195 feet of frontage on Grant, and the side property lines are about 165 feet in length. I would suggest to you that the property sitting on Grant Avenue the way it does is fairly unique at this point. There's a very modest slope differential. It's outside of any flood concern, there's no wetlands, as you heard from the engineer, and it is developed, developed parcel with an older modest home and several accessory buildings, and some of those accessory buildings are built very close and, if not, in fact, are on the rear park with a line. And in fact, I think one of the benefits of this application is removing some of the existing buildings that were put on the site, and I mean that with all due respect. So, the proposal is to subdivide the property, create three new lots, and then develop a sealed form dwelling on each of those new lots. The proposed lots, I believe you heard, had 64.8 feet of frontage, and that's actually a conforming number, a conforming amount of frontage, and we have 9,506 square feet of lot area. We are in the R4 zone, so 15,000 square feet are required, so we are seeking an area of variances in each of the three lots. And development plans have been submitted for all three lots. And I know this is a subdivision application, I don't want to get too much into the development plans, but a few highlights, if you don't mind. The side yards reach dwelling meet or exceed the zone standard, and that's especially true with the outside side yards of the outside dwellings, their lots, adjacent to the, adjacent to properties east and west of the subdivision. And I believe this is significant, as all the adjacent lots received, this application's approved, and houses of built are shown, will receive all the air light and open space that the R4 zone promises them. The R4 zone says you'll have a 10-foot side yard from your neighbor, or your neighbor will have a 10-foot side yard from you. We meet that standard. Even though the lots are a little bit narrower than the zone requires, and even though the area is less than the zone requires, we can make the side yard setbacks, especially east and western property, where they're the excess of what the zone standard requires. So I think that's very important when we start talking about air light and open space.
Mr. Altman, excuse me, can we pop up the, the building envelope drawing? I think you had a drawing in here that just shows the building envelope.
Steve, can you just scroll up? Sheet four?
I saw.
Yeah, go up. Here's sheet 11. Sheet four?
Uh, I'll get there sooner or later, I have computer issues for the last two weeks.
There we go.
Okay. Now, these are, these, these particular envelopes are showing the, on each of the three proposed lots, 30-foot front yard setback, a 40-foot rear yard setback, and the zone required 10-foot side yard setbacks for three lots. The more important lot, I believe, or plan, with all due respect, I believe is the site plan, sheet five, because there you actually see how those building envelopes get converted into dwellings. And if you look at the east lot and the west lot, you'll notice that the top, the side yard, the proposed dwellings do not extend to the side yard setback line. You'll also notice, and I was gonna get to this just in a second, the front yard setbacks in the zone are 30 feet each, but as you'll see on this, on this drawing, we're greatly in excess of that for the three lots, even when you measure at the narrowest distance between these unusual shaped lots and the street. So, as people would draw down Grant Avenue in this feeling of openness on the, on the particular property. And then also significant, because our dwellings at front on Lincoln, to like a sense of the south end of the subject property, the orders would require a 40-foot rear yard setback, but if you look at sheet five, the setbacks are, again, greatly in excess of that. So, one of the key goals in zoning, of course, is white area and open space, and I think this application, not just for one lot, not just the two proposed lots, but for all three proposed lots, provide for that open space to neighbors. So I think that's very important. Our surrounding properties are all developed, and I do have an exhibit, because the plan is not allowed out at night, so I'm gonna include it in there. And I'd like to go through this quickly, if you might. I'll leave this down for a second. We don't have time.
One second, before you do, board.
All right, then.
Kind of mark it so we know what we're talking about.
So, I'll put, was the photo marked last time?
I don't know, just, okay. Nothing was a photograph marked? I don't think there was a, okay. I don't think there was a, it adds on the discussion about it, so it'd be A1. Was that, it was marked up? Sorry about that, so it was as A1?
Yeah.
For identification. For identification. This would be A2.
A2?
Maybe you could just briefly describe it for the rest.
We got A2 as well.
What?
We got A2 as well.
Back to A3.
So, A3 on date of June 20th?
Yes.
June 20th, 2023, initial, and this is very simply a whole existing density map is dated, date fifth, 2016, and I'll tell you, that's wrong, because we didn't have this client then, so that's the date on the drawing, but that's an incorrect date. Now, I'll say it was constructed with my supervision, but I didn't check the date. Is it tight?
Bless.
What it simply is, is it takes the tax map for the area and provides densities. So, in Block 3300, Lot 8 is a quarter lot at Colfax and Grant Avenue, that's predeveloped with, appears to be a single-family house, and based on its lot area from the tax records, it's developed at a density of 4.67 units to the acre.
So, I'm just interrupting you for a second, there are the initials DU slash AC, what do those stand for online?
I'm sorry, those are the dwelling units per acre. It's a density measurement that planners use, and in the non-resi, in the non-residential world, we use FAR as a measure of the density, in the residential world, we use lot areas or densities. So, and higher density, more development on the lot, lower density, the lower level of density development. So, Lot 3300, Lot 8, it's been developed at a density level with a density of 4.67 units to the acre. Lot adjacent to it, Lot 8.01, has a density of 5.17 dwelling units per acre. Lot 9 is a large lot, and as such, it's got a lower density, it is, it's developed at a density of 2.69 dwelling units per acre. Lot 10 is an interesting lot, it appears to be developed with a four-family dwelling, and I got to that number simply by counting mailboxes that are on the front yard. It's a long dwelling, situated sideways on the lot, if you will, the tax records from New Jersey merge all one through four family dwellings into one category, they don't break them down or out, so discounting mailboxes. This Lot 10 appears to be developed with four dwellings, it's somewhat narrow lot, so it's developed at an 11.38, 11.38 dwelling units per acre. Lot 11 is the townhouse community, and according to the tax records, there are 20 townhouses on that development. It's developed at 13.07 dwelling units per acre. Lot 11.01 is a two-family dwelling, and that's developed at 8.69 dwelling and dwelling units per acre. On the other side of the street, the side of the street that the subject lot is on, the corner lot at Colfax and Grant, it's developed with a single-family dwelling, and the density of that property is 7.69 dwelling, 7.69 dwelling units per acre. The one next to it, Lot 37, is at 7.14 dwelling units per acre. The one next door, two of the subject property, a neighborhood to the east, is developed at 3.59 dwelling units per acre. The subject lot is an ultimately large lot, and it's developed at a 1.36 dwelling units per acre. That's actually probably a little bit high, because I was using the number that was in the tax records. So, I just found out this evening that that number is off by about 4,000 square feet, so again, for, for my testimony, this number is what we have on the drawing, that's probably, that is a little bit lower than, a little bit higher than it should be. And then the remaining lots, there are three lots developed at 4.76 dwelling units per acre, then the next one is 5.52, and then 5.33, those are developed with single-family dwellings. Once again, the last lot on the pro, on the block next to the railroad is developed at 6.22 dwelling units per acre. I went through that list, because clearly, the subject property, even with the bad math, is developed at the lowest density on the block. It also has a significant amount of width to it, so it is a lot which I believe is suitable for subdivision. You heard our attorney talk about the statutory criteria, and every applicant that is seeking a variance, either this board or the zoning board, needs to prove both the positive criteria and the negative criteria. You've heard every planner come before you say the same thing. And with the, with bulk variances, hardship variances, there are now two ways to seek that variance. There's a C1 variance, and those, that term C1 refers back to the municipal land use law, and that's the traditional hardship variance, where the lot's too narrow, too small, something to do with the dwellings that are awfully, that have been awfully erected on the property. But there's also a C2 test or option now, and that's the public benefits test. And, and the leading case in New Jersey on C2 variances is the Poland versus Township of St. South Plainfield case, and assuming we can prove the positive, those are all part of the positive criteria, we still need to turn attention then to the negative criteria. Because this is in New Jersey and nothing simple, the Poland case established three different tests that an applicant can prove. One, you have to prove that the variances will advance purposes of the municipal land use law, and there's like 15 or 16 or 18 of the last, I'm not counting them. Then also, the applicant needs to prove that the benefits of the variance outweighed any detriment created by the granting of variance. And then third, can the variance be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or impairment on the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance? And that sounds a lot like to me to be the negative criteria. I think there were multiple aspects of the proposed subdivision which are significant. First, I think the board can take fact that the subject lot is greatly oversized to the R4 zone, and I would admit using A3 for the neighborhood as well. Contrary to the purposes of the MUL, the current development intensity represents an inefficient use of land. The proposed subdivision represents a more efficient use of land, thus advancing municipal land use law purpose. land use law purpose. The results of the subdivision, which the board sees 50 granted, will be three new single-family dwellings, a permitted use to the R4 zone. It's notable that many lots along Grant Avenue, including two across the street from the subject property, are not developed with conforming uses. The condition of the existing property is somewhat unkempt. I don't want to say dilapidated, but it's not, it's seen its best day. And I believe the current condition of the property does not represent what Pompton Lakes seeks. A desirable visual environment will be established if the variance is granted, further in municipal land use law purpose. The subdivision can be effectuated so that all surrounding properties receive all the setbacks promised under provisions of the R4 zone. More specifically, the applicant is proposing fully conforming setbacks for each of the three dwellings. Not one setback variance has been sought for any of the three lots. In many instances, as I mentioned earlier, the proposed setbacks are greatly in excess of the R4 standards and requirements. In addition, the proposed developed dwellings are significantly below the maximum allowed building coverage. Your ordinance in the R4 zone allows for 25% building coverage. That's a fairly typical percentage for lots that have 15,000 square feet. We're significantly under that than that the proposed building coverages for the three lots are 18.2%. And I think that's significant, getting back to open space and what. So we're not overbuilding the property. So again, the provision of adequate airlight and open space is a municipal land use law goal. The applicant's proposed density is lower than 11 of the 13 lots on Grant Avenue that exist now. So this application advances the municipal land use goal of promoting the establishment of appropriate population densities. The application also furthers the municipal land use goal of guiding the appropriate development plans to promote the general welfare. The proposed uses are permitted from the R4 zone. The proposed density is comparable but lower than nearly all other Grant Avenue properties. And this is my second and final exhibit, which is now I interrupted in four yard. And I'll mark it as such and date it in the initial date. And this one is the plan of the proposed density map. It has the same incorrect date of May 4, 2016. And the only difference between this map and the previous map is we have the density, which is this time correct, for the proposed lots of 4.54 dwelling units per acre each of the three properties, and they're all the same size. That's significant, I think, because it's one thing to talk to you about the densities of a lot before the subdivision to the other lots on the block. Even after subdivision, there'll only be two lots on the, on Grant Avenue from Colfax to the railroad that have lower densities. So out of all the other lots, they'll have higher densities than the proposed development. So I think that also gets to the municipal land use law goals. The zoning laws require your side lot lines to be at right angles to the streets, but due to a quirk in the ordinance, the lot width standards are greater than the lot front standard. We meet the lot front standard of 50 feet, which is measured at the Grant Avenue right of the lot. But your R4 zone requires a lot width of 75 feet. Well, if you do that, you don't have lot lines which are perpendicular to the street. So we can meet the lot front's requirement, and we are seeking a variance from the lot width speed of 75 feet. Now, to meet the negative criteria, so that's the positive criteria. To meet the negative criteria, we need to demonstrate how this proposed development is in keeping with the spirit of the master plan. Pompton Lakes' master plan was adopted in 2007, and we have to show that it will not substantially impair the zone plan, which is the master plan. And I recognize there is a more recent reexamination report. But the statute talks about the zone plan, which is the master plan, not the reexamination report. And they are two very much different documents. The notice requirements are different. The provisions of the municipal land use law that deal with master plans is section 28. The section that deals with reexamination reports is section 89. And a reexamination report just looks at five different criteria to evaluate the master plan. It's not really a planning model. It's, the master plan is, the reexamination isn't. Your 2007 master plan describes Pompton Lakes as a densely populated community with small commercial districts. And elsewhere, the master plan points out that dense residential neighbors dominate the borough's terrain. Further on in the master plan, the planning board identified three critical issues facing Pompton Lakes. And these included the downtown business districts, which is probably true for most small towns in North Jersey, gateway entrances to the borough, and the reuse of the Dupont property. The planning board denied any other critical issues other than those three above. Didn't talk about lot areas, didn't talk about densities. The planning board established numerous goals and objectives for Pompton Lakes, including under the land use element, under the residential section of the land use element. One was to preserve the borough's single-family character. This application achieves that goal. It's to ensure that new residential construction is compatible with the scale of borough's existing housing stock. The application achieves this goal, and I think the proof is that the density is so much lower than most of the other Grant Avenue properties. Another goal is to control the bulk of new homes and additions. And I believe we do that by exceeding the setback requirements for front yards, rear yards, and certainly for the outside side yards, east and west of the subject property. So I believe we've met the goals and objectives established. So in conclusion, the Poland case is the leading C2 case, and we meet the, I believe, this application meets the Poland standards. We do that by advancing several purposes of the municipal land use laws I testified to. We also do without adversely impacting undeterminant municipal land use law's substantial impairments in the zone plan. In master plan IDs, three critical features, residential lot sizes and, excuse me, residential densities are not among those. This application furthers several goals and objectives of the master plan. And then by providing appropriate population densities and meeting or exceeding all the setback requirements, I believe this application does not cause substantial detriment to the public good. And in fact, I think it does the opposite by improving the built environment on this particular lot and exchanges what's there now for three new single-family dwellings. So for all those reasons, I respectfully offer that this application satisfies both the positive and the negative criteria, and the application should be approved by the board.
Mr. Lydon, I just, because the municipal engineer raised the question, perhaps you can address the question about seeking three separate lots as opposed to two?
Yes. That really isn't the standard that was in the engineer's report. The standard is the one established by the Poland case, and I think we need it. And that's really the best way I think I can address it. The test that's established for the grant of the variance is, under the C2 provision, is the Poland case, and I think we've met that burden.
Thank you. I have no additional questions, Mr. Lydon.
Okay, great.
No, I'm not a planner, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that I'm representing his engineer, so.
You're still good first, Dave.
Okay. I was doing some calculations just to verify some of the things, and I satisfied myself with the information. I don't have any questions in regards to planning. I was going to, I thought about bringing one up, but I walked myself out of it as I'm satisfied.
I'm glad you weren't.
I did.
Any members of the board have questions for the planner? I think this is really a critical testimony, so. Couple of comments. Glad you went through the detail that you did. The density, I think, is critical. And I think you demonstrated that the three lots are somewhat compatible with the existing density. So I was glad to see that we didn't have that last time. So that makes it a little bit more easy to understand for both us and the public as to what you're trying to accomplish. I'll leave other comments to, you know, when we go to discussion, but I thought that was helpful. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any members of the public have a question for the planner specifically on this application? Seeing I will close public session. Okay, who else do you have to bring before us?
I have the architect.
Okay. State your names by your last.
It's James P. Cotillo, C-U-T-I-L-L-O.
You swear I will affirm the testimony of this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth and hope we got.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cotillo? Yeah, you don't have to qualify, Jim. He's been here before, I was before.
Thank you.
And I just think that's a holiday.
Mr. Cotillo, you're familiar with this application?
I guess I am.
And you're familiar with the plans?
I am.
And how are you so familiar with these plans?
These are, the house plans are prepared by my office. And I reviewed the engineering site plans as well.
Okay. Can you just very briefly walk the board through what it is that we intend to do if this application is granted with respect to dwellings on each lot?
Certainly. So what you have up on the board this evening is the same drawing that I have in front of me, the same drawings that you have in your packet. It consists of one page that's dated 5/9 of this year, and it basically shows a preliminary floor plan of the first floor, the second floor, and it shows three different front elevations that are similar.
Did you mark that A5?
I can, yes.
It's in your packet. If you want to mark that.
Oh, it's marked.
I'll mark it.
Oh, that, yeah, A1 is his number.
We don't need?
It's in it.
Okay, that's exactly what's up there?
Yes. Okay. Perfect.
So the pics, three variations of the front elevation, and then the right, left, and the rear elevations are all showing up in the upper area there, which are pretty much all the same. They're not as detailed in the drawing as the other front elevations. So basically, that's trying to represent that we're not going to cookie cutter, you know, just think those are trying to create a floor plan that works for us. We can, we can have some variation in what the buildings actually look like. And in fact, the engineer has foot flopped one of the houses, so it will be orientated in reverse. So the, starting with the floor plans, we are showing that the living area, there's a two-car garage, and then there's basically an open floor plan, kitchen, great room, dining room. There's a small office powder room on the first floor. That comprises of 1,243 square feet. And when you get the upper area, we have three bedrooms, we have two bathrooms and a laundry room, and that consists of 1,500 square feet, bringing the total square footage of our proposed house, actually just under 2,400 square feet. I think it's really important to note that, as the planner and the engineer spoke, that we're making the footprint of the house smaller than the building area, and we're well within the percentage of coverage. This is a situation where the size of this house fits very well within the neighborhood, and we're not, we're not near the height requirement, we're not near the setback requirements, and we're not near the building coverage requirements. So this is a piece of property that left undivided, could house a very, very large structure on it. I didn't do the math, but probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 7,000 square feet for a single-family house that would be conforming to the zone. Then basically, if you divided the lot in half, you could easily see that your 2,400 square foot house, which is actually smaller than what's allowed, could maybe be doubled in size, certainly 3,500, 4,000 square foot for a double lot subdivision. So we feel that dividing it into three lots actually makes more sense and maintains the fact that we're going to be building smaller homes on the property that are more conforming to the area.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have a question for Mr. Cotillo about the houses? No? I mean, it's appropriate, what you're saying is that, you know, they're not overdesigned for the lot.
And there's a nice room here, too, that you want to add, Doug?
But now I understand why reading that, too. Makes sense.
Just one thing I noticed, the second floor plan, you have a door leading into what looks like store room, S-T-O-R-R-M?
Yes.
There's no outside walls.
So that's like an attic. So that's where the roof is sloping down in the front, so if you look at the front elevation. So it could have been labeled attic.
Any other questions?
I guess with the garage, there's no basement, right? Just a sled?
For the garage, correct.
All right. The rest of that house?
The rest of the house has a basement.
It will.
Any other questions on the board? Again, I will open up to the public for questions specifically of the architect. And seeing none, close the public session. I think we're good with Mr. Cotillo.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So I would, for the board's pleasure, I think I'd like to have Mr. DePaul just testify to, really to respond to questions that you may have, and perhaps to address the engineer's comments concerning, you know, his plans for timing and for constructing, what it is that you're looking at tonight as opposed to simply seeking a subdivision application and flipping the property.
I think I was sworn in.
You're sworn in, you remain sworn in. You have to continue to tell the truth. Mr. DePaul, you've been in the room this evening?
Yes.
Okay. And you've heard the testimony of the engineer and the planner and the marketing?
Yes.
Did you want to provide any testimony for the board concerning your specific plans if this application is granted?
Yes. My goal was to build the first house to the left of the lot first. I wanted to leave the existing house there and the garage until I completed that first house. The reason being is because the garage is a place for me to store material and stuff, and the existing house has electric and gas. It would, if I knocked it down, then I would have to be required to get a temporary electric into the area. So it was just simple to leave that existing house. Once I completed that house, I would have knocked down all the accessory structures that are required for this subdivision, and then I would start at the second. Hopefully, I would start at, well, three, depends on the economy and, you know, the interest in the area.
Did you have any plans, if this application were granted, did you have any plans to sell the property as, with the approvals and provide it to?
Absolutely not.
Thank you. I have no additional questions.
Any questions from the board?
I actually have a question for the engineer. Does leaving the existing structure on the property standing after the subdivision, does that create a situation where that structure is going to span a property line?
No.
No. Based on the testimony provided by the applicant, he said he would build the first house to the left.
To the left, yes.
So that wouldn't conflict with the existing house. That existing house would technically be on a different lot of this property, or it would actually cross two lots in the opinion of the first house here. So he would build the first house on his own new subdivision lot legally. The existing house is still, for that timeline, going to exist on two lots illegally for that amount of time. So that's just a consideration in time. I think it's more important, in my opinion, that it's demoed eventually, obviously, in the best interest of the property.
Not to your fault legally, but the applicant could amend their application to allow for zero setbacks across the line, which you can grant for that, that home, which must be taken down on a certain date. So I think that it could be, it could be, it would not be illegal if you, if you asked to amend your application so that you could perfect the subdivision into three lots that would have an existing home straddling. There would be zero setbacks, could not sell the property, so you wouldn't want them in different ownership. There'd be some conditions on it, but it wouldn't be illegal, and there would be, and would want a condition that that prop, that that house wouldn't be taken down, you know, at a certain time.
Now, we could, we could work on that if we get to that point. Think about that.
About the conditional approval, or to, to, if you were considering approving the application to make it a condition on X, Y, and Z, I mean, there are going to be conditions in any event, right? So I would think that one of those conditions would be, in following with his testimony, that in fact, the house on the left would be constructed first, and that once that house is constructed, that the existing dwelling is demolished, you know, we can have a discussion about the time period in which...
The, the point that he makes exists, though. Once you file, if you file your subdivision deeds.
Right.
And you have a home that does not have those type of setbacks.
Right.
So you have created non-conformities at that point.
Right.
So that, that exists. And all I'm saying, the way to avoid that, if the board was so inclined to grant this condition, they would have to hand their application to request that the, that they, you would approve those, the home straddling, zero setbacks, which approval will last as long until that home was taken down, which would be a condition of sale or a condition of some, we would have to work, because they hasn't, they have not, they have not amended their application yet. But that's just dealing with the point that was brought up by the engineer. So you would not be in a legal, so you would not be in a non-conformity situation.
I understand. Or just subdivide that one lot first, so then you wouldn't have the second lot line going through the house.
That is another way to deal with it, yes.
I don't know, it's, there's probably more cause, I don't know which is...
Yeah, that's another way to deal with it, absolutely. It would require another application, I know. It would prove it, but there would not be, the condition would be they could not perfect dividing the property that would cut, intersect that home, that couldn't be perfected until the home was taken down. That'd be the other way to prevent a non-conformity if...
Actually, I think I like that better. I think that's cleaner, and I appreciate the suggestion, because that, it's sort of self-effectuating. Once he tears that down, the subdivision lot...
So you could, yeah, you could subdivide the one lot off, but not the, the other ones could not be that, the subdivision of the property on which the home straddles, that could not be perfected and filed until that is taken down.
Right, but it would not require a new application.
Right.
An amended application. It would simply be a condition if you were so inclined to grant the approval tonight.
The amended application would be you saying it today when you're amended. The board accepting it, but I like that suggestion. It'll be just as good, and it'll be easier.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can we just walk through that again? So we're going to be building the house on the left, knock down the existing house.
Correct.
And then construct the other two.
That's correct. Yeah, what they'll, what they would do is there is a large piece of property, they're actually going, what they're saying is that they would subdivide one-third of that off. So for, while that house is being built, there will be a lot that is 18,000 square feet, and a lot that's 9,000, then 500 square feet. That house will get built, and then they will take down the house, and then there will be a third, the three lots.
Okay. Are you going to have the same constraints, though, building house number two and number three, because you're not going to have any power?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, yeah. That's right. You're going to bring temporary...
At that point, yeah. Unless the first house isn't sold, they don't have power now, right? Like an extension.
So at this point, what I want to, just hold that in the veins, because I got to see where we go with this application. So is there anything else for the owner? What's your time limit?
If it were to be approved. If it were to be approved, I'd start immediately. Depending on building materials, I would say it's, one house is about seven months, okay? Pretending to permitting and all that, it's about a seven-month project.
And this is stick-built?
Stick-built.
Okay.
Full basement, concrete block basement.
Okay, I'm going to open up to the public for questions from Mr. DePaul, specifically to what he testified to. Anyone have a question? Seeing none, I'll close the public session. And is that the completion now?
It is, Mr. Chairman. Just as a matter of housekeeping, I'd like to offer the exhibits that we've marked A1 through A4 into evidence.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And is there any else that you have?
No, just very briefly, I think we've satisfied the negative and positive criteria. I, my view of this is that this will be a substantial veteran of the neighborhood, and it certainly will be in keeping with the densities, and will be an attractive addition on the lakes. I would ask that you approve the application.
I have one question to ask, to answer the question before. But I have no idea what the board is going to vote, so I presume, I'm not presuming how you would vote at all. Obviously, one of the, the, the much part of testimony on this being a beneficial subdivision, despite the fact that we're going to have three size variances, is that they, the applicant would not, would completely comply with the side yard, the front yard, and the rear yard setbacks. That's true on what's proposed. I don't know if that's important enough that the board wants to put a restriction in the subdivision approval if you so voted, that they could not seek any variances from side yard, front yard, or rear yard unless they can pack, because in fact, if you approve it, and that's fine. If you approve it as is, and they look for variance, they're not going back here, they go to the board adjustments, you wouldn't be hearing it. That's fine, but I just want to raise that with you, because if you don't put down the restriction, as in any property yard, they can do that.
And if I may, this, we have no judgment of that. This, you, you have seen precisely what we intend to build.
What I'd like to do is get to the discussion if the board has. So do you want to continue with your summation?
No, I have nothing else.
Nothing else? Okay. What I'd like to do now is ask for public comment. We're no longer in questions. Does anyone have a comment about this application and what you've heard? We'll then go into discussion and determine a vote. So nothing is cast in concrete at this point, but if you do have a question, please raise your hand, or not a question, a statement. Seeing none, I'll close the public session. All right, with that said, for the board, we've heard engineer, planner, owner, architect. We've heard what changed from last month. The presentations are more thorough this month, so I think we have a clear understanding as to what's being done. I'll offer a few comments. I'll look for comments from the board members, and then at some point, when you guys are done with that, we can take a vote. And if there's any conditions on anything for approval, then we'll discuss that with the chairman before we take the vote. So, a couple of general comments. As I said earlier, the planner, to me, is the key for this one. It sounded like the engineer's issues were very insignificant. If our engineer is satisfied with the way they propose handling the drainage and anything else in the way of improvements, then I think the engineering portion is pretty straightforward. The architect presented a plan that has an attractive-looking housing unit, which they've indicated has a slight variation, and consequently, we would expect that it represented, what was represented here would be something that we would see in fact. And the owner's indicated his timeline and how he intends to keep control of the project, which is important. The, the density issue was important to me, that was one that I mentioned earlier, because what it shows is that when this project is completed as they propose it, that it does not really change the, the density in that area. Kind of brings a lot up to somewhat similar densities. So I think that was important, and you have testimony on the size of the house. So with those few comments, I'd like to hear from the board members as to how they feel about the project. Let's discuss it. Anybody have comments? Henry?
I just have one comment. If the nine would do two lots, that we have some assurance that this second lot will be divided.
That'll be part of, if we get to that, that'll be part of the legal terms that'll connect the...
You know, economically, you know...
Yeah, we all want to make sure that if this should be approved, that there's consistency in the testimony.
Well, I'm sorry, your point is that they actually...
They actually tear the house down and create the three lots.
I can't afford to do it, so I, it's legal, so why should I do the third?
It, when you're, when you are granting a subdivision, you are allowing them to subdivide. When you vote, there's, there's no subdivision then. Typically, you know, unfortunately, when you grant approval, you can't force them to do what you gave them approval to do. You can restrict them from doing other things until they do it, but you can't force them to go to the subdivision. And they're, they're going to run into a timeline where they're probably going to need the extension of their subdivision approval. Because what you do is you give approval for them to go down to the county, file the subdivision deeds, and they have a limited amount of time to do that. Most likely, they'll have to come and they'll, you know, maybe if it gets the house built real fast, they'll be able to do it, might need some extension, but we can build in some extensions. But I do understand it, but for, yeah, it is really restricting them from doing other things until they do what they're supposed to, so I, I will, I understand the concern, but forcing them to do it is a little difficult.
Well, the other thing is he could refuse to do anything. I mean, he could get the approvals and then decide, nah, I don't want to do it. He's not forced to actually go through it all. But obviously, that's not the case, what we're seeing here. Is that okay? Do you understand that?
Yeah, I know. Okay. We're like agreeing to do it if we want.
Yeah. That's why we rely on our authority to make sure that we have all the precautions that we need to have in place. Other questions from the board?
If he decided to just subdivide off the one lot, tear down the existing structure after he builds the first house, he could build a bigger house on a bigger lot. He doesn't have to subdivide it to three then, correct?
That's pretty much what he said.
I, yes.
Right?
Can we get something in writing?
I don't, I don't know if we want to restrict that either, because if he does decide that, okay, I sold the smaller one, I want to use the bigger one, build a bigger house, he shouldn't be allowed to do that.
He, he, just, forgive me, I don't want to intrude on the board's discussion, but he has had a significant expense and soft costs for these plans. He has analyzed this thoroughly, and it would make no sense financially, economically, to go through this process only to really undo it after one house is constructed and then build a larger house than the neighborhood calls for. So...
I'm just trying not to pigeonhole him into having to build three. If he decided to build two, I think he shouldn't be allowed to.
No, no, I appreciate that, and I think you're right. He, he would satisfy the ordinance, but it, it wouldn't make sense for him to do that. Yeah, but...
I think the planner made a very good case, and I agree that the three subdivision makes the most economical sense. Any other comments from the board?
I actually have a question for Andy.
Sure.
Because this was presented, started last meeting, and I was not here, am I allowed to vote on this?
Not unless you have listened to the tapes and certified the oath.
Okay.
You could participate in everything, but that's all. Let me, let me say that there's enough merit here to approve this, if the board is so inclined. What I would want to do is get a motion in a second to either approve or not approve, but if it should be to approve, I'd like to hold it on the act of the second to discuss it, so that we cover any conditions. So at this point, is the board prepared to offer a motion either way?
I make a motion that we approve.
Okay. Which, you want the motion to approve?
Yes.
Tim has seconded. Okay, at this point, I want to bring up any conditions or items that we need to have in this resolution.
I think, I think the two that remain were that the applicant cannot perfect the final sub, the subdivision of the second and third lots on which the current home is constructed until the entire structure has been taken down to the satisfaction of the building spectrum. That would be the condition for that one. And then this would, the resolution would contain a condition that, that would be in the, in the subdivision deeds, that they will not, that it was a specific condition that no bulk variances for side, rear, or front yard setbacks will be sought.
Okay. They don't have to come back and reapply after that existing structure is torn down?
You're giving them the approval. They have, but they cannot...
Taking down that structure.
In order for them to perfect their subdivision, they're going to have to have subdivision deeds, which our engineer will look at the meets and bends description to make sure it's right. I will look at the language, and that will not be approved, and the chairman won't sign that last one until there's a certification from the building spectrum.
Okay. Perfect.
That's how that would be, I think.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? I just want to say, I think that the presentations tonight clarify a lot, and the fact that the planning issue seems, in my opinion, to satisfy the conditions of granting the It seems like a modest increase in density compared to what's there now. It seems like a reasonable-sized home for both the street and Pomda Lakes we don't have, McMansions, that we have to worry about. But I take it as my own opinion that the result of this will be an enhancement to that street. And I would just want to make sure that in your improvements, that sidewalks, curbs, trees, landscaping, which is not part of this discussion tonight, are brought up to current standards, so that we don't end up with a pockmarked sidewalk in the middle of a nice group of homes. But, you know, that's just a, kind of a gratuitous comment that I hope you consider. Anyone else comment before we take a vote? I'll roll call vote, please.
Mr. Sumo?
Yes.
Mr. Trust?
Yes.
Mr. Fromara?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Dr. Pendexter?
Present.
Mr. Keating?
Yes.
Mr., excuse, Mr. Bodby?
Yes.
And Councilman Bennet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for presentations.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciate this conversation.
Jimmy, it's good seeing you again, pal. I'll give them a minute to remove their stuff, then we have two conceptual items, and then some general discussion. I'll give them a minute to remove their stuff, then we have two conceptual items and then some general discussion. Okay, the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is conceptual. I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Beckenzuda? Are you here? Okay. And this is the site of the Farmview Pork Store, 126 Wanacue Avenue. For the public, a conceptual, please have a seat. A conceptual plan is not obligating either the board or the applicant. It is merely a request to discuss what they might propose to do. And you leave here with some comments only, and the rest is up to you. Okay, so let's discuss what you'd like to do at the Farmview Pork Store.
It's, I started out in Pompton Plains. I mean, Pompton Plains, before that, in the past. Sixteen years I opened here. Pompton Plains, the COVID came, so it closed it down. So my people, they want me to open another one.
Hold on a second, we have to get a little.
Yeah, could you just take, grab that microphone and bring it closer to you?
Okay, so why don't you start over again? Thank you, because there was some discussion there. Sorry.
And I, I had a private social company in Paris.
What was it? A?
A private company.
Oh, okay.
And I sold that. I came to Pompton Plains, Route 23. I kept it for two years in a COVID tank, so I had to close it down. And now my people, they want me to open one Pompton Plains. Because they don't know where to go. They want to get it together. So I decided to open one. I saw a port store here, and the rent is cheap, so.
And what would you actually use the facility for?
They play chess. They play, they watch Alvin and the New Ones and sports. They gather together. They want to see each other. They come here. I want to see sodas, espresso, cappuccino.
Okay. Is there anything in our code that wouldn't prohibit that, right? Is that kind of a meeting place?
Octavian.
What occupancy? What would the number of people like it would be?
I have thirty-six friends. But they're not coming together Fridays, Saturdays. They, they might gather together, usually ten, twenty, fifteen, tens.
I don't know what the redevelopment area, you know, permits, you know, the other plan for one, two, and I don't know. You'd have to look at that. Give comments on, but I do have a chance to do.
Okay. I'm trying to dig if there's something. Like, we have a coffee and tea place where they sell coffee, tea, and a few little muffins and things. People go in there and they sit at a table and relax and talk and stuff. I don't know if it would be terribly different in there, Tom?
Just that particular store, though, you're restricted because you only have a front entrance. You go to the rear of the store, again, it's that old section of Wanacue Ave. That you have the sublevel, and then you have a basement, which is, can't use as an exit.
Where a certain instance is a store, so.
Exactly, storefront with minimal occupancy, so when you have a place to gather in or a.
Is it suitable for a rear exit, like a emergency staircase, or that doesn't really see?
You could put fire escape, you know, but it's, there might be restrictions on the outside because then you have some stuff downstairs as well. So, that's the only place. It's a place of assembly, and I don't know what kind of occupancy load you'll be able to get out. But again, you could put in. But there's a restaurant just to the right of it, you know. Correct. I mean, they don't have a rear entrance. But you see their, see the tables that they have, so they're restricted on their occupancy. So if you talk to a place to gather, we don't know who's coming and who's gonna be there.
Right.
That's the only. That restaurant does have a rear?
Talking about the Cardinal?
No, the one to the right. Jardine, Latte. Yeah, just the kitchen here. Again, same thing, it's that old section of Wanacue Ave there, so. So again, they have a small table settings, and you have a limited amount, but again, to say that it's open game. But they'll have to apply, you know, to the building department, they'll have to get a drawing up to say what's their assembly. What the occupancy is. I mean, I've been in that restaurant, there's been twenty people in there. Yeah. That would be, it's got average about fifteen, twenty people.
Yeah, I'm not a part. There's a day they can come, Friday, Saturday, mostly, get together. Because the other day they go to work, they have. So, other days, you can get ten people, you can get nine, you can get seven, depends.
Well, it sounds, it sounds to me like it's not something that we would really need to address here. It would be, they would actually have to go before we develop, wouldn't they? Well, they're not really gonna do anything, though. It's just, just a sentence.
It's just to get their CEO. They get their CEO, the building department, but the occupancy load on it.
Yeah, so the building department, right across the hall there. Bring a floor plan, if you have it.
I haven't.
And show them how you would lay it all out, and then maybe the number of people, and let them guide you on what you may need to do, and then see if that's feasible. And if it is, then, you know, it doesn't sound like he has to come back here for that, right?
Yeah, what is the, a fraternal organization?
No, says it's a social club, right here, a social. And then it would be the same. People are gonna go there, have a couple of coffee, hang out, play chess.
I don't know if that was doing a problem. My only question, very well liked the apartment, I'm not saying it's not. That's not what we're doing, just somebody will take it. They'll know if you.
The building department's gonna be able to guide you better. So I would say, take it to them, so that you can sit down with the building official. He can give you an idea of what would need to be done, and then you can see if that works for you.
Mr. Chairman, also, so occupancy, also parking. You know, there's no access from the back, so they'll have to park in the back. And they can walk up, they got the ramp up by the Jardineo, right next door, they can walk up. But I'm just saying that's for thirty-six people, but parking might be a issue in the back.
It's not gonna be a lot, like thirty-six cars.
Got it.
It can be, I can call, because we all here around. So I call my friends, I can get two people, three people in my car, and buy a coffee.
It's just a limitation, that's all. It's something that, you know, you understand it when you go into it, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? No? Good. Well, thank you for coming. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
And the next we have is another conceptual, TNS Painting and Maintenance, Tom Mazara. This is 270B Wanacue Avenue, and the property is owned by Rick Trumanella. Hello, Rick.
Hi, how are you?
Okay, Mr. Mazara?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. Same thing applies with you. We're looking for ideas of what you plan to do.
Right, it's going to be a cabinet showroom and office for kitchen cabinets and for having customers come in, sit down, do a design on the computer. Select cabinets, that's why I brought the, basically, this is what, you know, our door samples would be hanging in the place, and this is what we carry around. That's pretty much it. That's all it would be used for.
And where would this be within your property?
It's gonna be, 270B is next to the Cardinal Frame.
Next to Cardinal Frame? Okay.
So this is a center of office for free customers.
And so you would mostly go to customers, or they would come in by you?
Well, right now, it's, I'm going to customers, so I mean, I still would continue that. Obviously, you have to go, the work is performed at the customer's residence, so.
Okay.
Customers could come in.
But this could be a showroom for you?
Yeah, there's gonna be a showroom, a showroom office, probably.
Correct.
You're gonna have one secretary there.
I don't know if anyone has an issue with that, but it seems to be a normal use for that.
Yeah. We had a cabinet showroom in Colfax, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'd be no manufacturing, no storing of anything there?
No, there's no storing, there's cabinets, so be, if something shipped, it's gonna go right out. And it, most of the time, the items are shipped right from my supplier to the resident.
To the job. There won't be any staging or anything like that there as far as?
No. It's not big enough for a warehouse type atmosphere, so.
All right, if I'm asking.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, I wish, I wish it, I wish it was.
We don't, we don't have. Then we wouldn't.
No, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in that.
Okay, that's fine.
So you do refacing as well, or you just do full brand new cabinets?
No, full brand new cabinets. You know, we offer painting services with it too, I mean, but we're, we're, we buy right from Forevermark Cabinry. Okay, so it's, we get our products from TSG, which is based in Edison, so that it makes a great house.
Anyone have comments or questions?
What's there now? I just can't picture it in my mind.
There was a clothing store there, there was a girls' clothing store.
Right now, that's what's there?
Yeah, they left last year.
Typically, I see it every day or every third day, and then you go, what did I just see?
Okay. We don't have really any comment apparently, so good luck with that, and hopefully you work it out and you become a new business owner in town. We look forward to it.
Yeah. My father started the business, and we've been in business for over thirty years. Thanks very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Okay. New unfinished business. Does anyone have any new unfinished business to bring up?
Mr. Chairman, just under unfinished, I guess, because Steve brought it up last meeting, and it was very ironic that our planner that presented today brought up the same situation Steve was talking about. Saying that we have a 2007 master plan, but we didn't know what that 2017 thing was, and I think you kind of described it.
That's why we have the Master Plan Committee to pick out a new plan for us. So it puts a little bit more of an impetus on making sure that the new plan is comprehensive rather than updated in any kind.
No, I didn't want to ask, I was gonna say, I didn't want to ask him because I didn't want it to go to midnight tonight, but is that what it is, stretched up a little bit?
It's stretched a little bit because he didn't want to read, but it says everything, the master plan is not being changed, it's still consistency. You reexamine, so it says, we have examined the entire existing plan, this is all we changed. That's it. It is, it's saying everything else is still good.
Got it.
But you did study certain things and make specific recommendations from that. But 2007 is a long time ago, even though it was updated, revisited in seventeen. We're due for it in a couple of years anyway, and it doesn't, it does take a while. I did receive a, an email from Deb Waller, who's our planner, and there's a process that has to be involved where we have to make sure that the town is gonna fund the extent to which we need to go. And the process is lengthy and expensive to do a full master plan. So at some point, I'm gonna have her come in here and discuss with us because the whole board ultimately has to vote on it, as well as the council, but the committee has to be the starting point, so. At this, at this time, we will talk with the mayor and council and find out, you know, what their plans are for money, because it's not gonna be free, that's for sure.
And the reexamen in 2017 was a result of there not being funds available for a new plan.
And we're talking probably two fifty, three hundred grand as far as doing the full blown master plan. So again, you know, we'll, we'll discuss that further, but that just puts, you know, a timeframe. We shouldn't just overlook it and start too late, so. There are no other items on the agenda, there's no resolutions. I'll open this meeting to public comment for anything that they wish to discuss. Anyone have a question or a comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public session. Anything else further from the board? If not, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What the mayor opposed, come on! Thank you all. Repeat it.